Here.
Here.
Stanford.
Here.
Thomas.
He was here.
Is here.
Here.
Wecken.
Here.
And Zettler.
Here.
And so we will come to board and nominate a President Pro Tem for the meeting.
I nominate trustee Zappa to serve as President Pro Tem for our meeting tonight.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Third call for nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Congratulations, Mark.
I don't have any short stories to tell, so. Item two, review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting of August 2nd, 2011.
We'll approve the board minutes from the regular board meeting on August 2nd, 2011?
We have a second, please.
Second.
Any other discussion on that item?
One item that was actually mentioned for possible amendments in the grievance policy development section, page three of the minutes, it states that example, sample policy will be developed by Bucky Norman. What we're going to do is change that to say, "A sample policy was developed by Bucky Norman along with samples from the League of Wisconsin municipalities," which will be discussed further. So that would be a recommended change.
Will you approve that recommended change?
Yes, I will.
Second?
Second.
All right, thanks. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Item two is approved. Three, comments from the floor, this is the opportunity for residents to make the board their topics or issues, not on today's agenda. Is there anyone who would like? We don't have anybody who wishes to be present today, so we move on to our historic preservation committee and village centennial presentation. Stan, are you?
Well, the committee for, I'm the chair of the committee that George assigned me to last year. We've burned out one half of the committee, so my wife and I, we've got, now we have new members, so we don't really have presentation right now. We are, the discussion has been both with the village personnel and with Pepperfest. The centennial, it is, I believe, June of next year, your year's centennial. And there's been pretty good discussion on planning like a cookbook, history, you know, book type of thing. It's loosely for, there's different varieties, but where there'd be, we'd have some of the old recipes, you know, from, you know, the new recipes for the residents to get involved in that. And, you know, the costs, you know, we can cover those, it's not, you know, it's, we're still working on that. We haven't determined what that is yet, so, but then we were hoping maybe to have a pre-sale, which if we did that, we could also fund then any kind of centennial celebration that we might have, you know, to commemorate this historic occasion.
Thank you, Stan. Item five, new business from the board or staff, president's comments. We won't have any of those, obviously. Gloria?
I'm going to pass also.
Thank you. Becky?
The only thing that I would have to report is just that since the last meeting there, we did have the recall election, which was, that we had a very high voter turnout, but everything went smoothly and nothing else really to report on that.
Thank you. Item six, appointment of Hudson Public Utilities Commission representative, Chris Adams, approval requested.
I'll move that the board trustees approve the appointment of Chris Adams to Hudson Public Utility Commission for a five-year term ending in September 2016.
Second.
We have a second from Colleen. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Chris Adams is approved for Public Utilities Commission. Item seven, amended class B liquor license for extended premises for Cozy Corner for September 17, 2011, requested.
I moved that the class, parents B, class B retail license for the sale of minimum amount beverages and intoxicating liquors for Cozy Corner be temporarily amended for an event taking place on Saturday, 17th September, 2011, between the hours of 3:30 PM and midnight with foggy conditions. Area outside of the building be completely enclosed with a fence and extended premises accessed only from within the building. Use of alcohol shall remain within the building or fenced in area per establishment's liquor license. Number three, use of outside area only with specific permission of the village board for requested date and time. Number four, owner to provide an equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking while parking lot is fenced during the time of the event. Number five, owner to be responsible for DJ and music volume. And number six, all outside music to end no later than 10:00 PM.
Can I get a second on Stan's motion, please?
Second.
Thanks, Jim. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carried for item seven. Item eight, commission recommendation, chair update.
We are still working on the parkland dedication fees. It's in the works, we haven't have anything finalized yet.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Item nine, personnel and finance committee recommendation. Item A, claims approval requested.
Mr. Chairman, we did meet earlier tonight in finance committee and did review the claims, so I move to approve the August 2011 non-recurring claims, the $63,624.30.
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion regarding that item? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, claims approved. Item B, selection of assessor services approval requested.
If I can find that, we did have.
The bill?
Mr. Chairman, we had a special finance committee meeting earlier this month and did approve and recommend assessor services, so, Mr. Chairman, I move that the contract for assessor services for the village of North Hudson be awarded to Bomar Appraisal, Inc., that the village administrator be authorized to sign the contract on behalf of the village.
Thank you, Darrell. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Stan, any other discussion or update for anybody on this process? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Item C, selection of auditor services, approval requested. I think that one is going to be on hold, we discussed that at finance, and we still need some more information regarding that. Item D, unused levy limit carryover, approval requested. Gloria give us that in a little bit of a nutshell?
Well, I guess the best way to give it as briefly as possible is use the background information on the issue statement. The levy limit will be calculated based on the prior year's actual instead of the allowable. That was, that came down from the state, and the village did not carry over its full allowable amount last year, so there is a limited amount you can carry forward, which is half a percent. And in order to do that, we need the board's approval. The document that's attached to that issue statement shows you the breakdown of how we calculate and get to the levy limit, and the levy limit represents the taxes that go out to the residents, and you'll notice that it's going to be quite a bit different, or lower this year than last year, and that's because of the refinancing that we did. But with that being said, we are in, we do, we are in need of cutting expenses in order to balance our budget for next year, and so when you add the $7,000, in order to add that, you have to subtract something else, and it comes to about $3,000. But it's $3,000 that we need in order to function, so I'm requesting that the board approve carrying forward.
This item was approved at finance, and actually I'm more confused now than it was then, but nonetheless.
We did discuss this at finance, Mr. Chairman, I move that the village administrator be authorized to carry forward the reference $7,088 of unused levy from the prior year.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Jim, thank you, Jim. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Nine E, 2012 annual village budget approval requested. Have you got done with that?
That's been on there at the president's request since, for three months now, so, no, four months now. And at some point, we will be approving it.
We have a couple meetings scheduled in the next few weeks for that, and nothing to really approve tonight. Item 10, public works committee recommendations, I'll leave that up to the honorable Mr. Stanford.
Thanks for the accolades. There is no particular chair update, but we do have a completed project, and that is the St. Croix Station project, which is now done. We did discuss this and recommend in our last public works meeting on the recommendation of Cedar Corp., that there are no outstanding issues, and we can proceed with the payment of the final invoice, so, Mr. Chairman, I would move that the village, if I can find the amount.
Yeah.
About $8,000, but I.
$83.97.93.
There we go. That the village pay the final invoice amount of $8,397.93 to the contractor, Zappa Brothers.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion is approved. Item C, regulation of 2011-13, levy special assessment for public improvements on St. Croix, or, I'm sorry, Station Lane North and Station Circle North.
This relates to the project that is now complete, and we do have the indicated information in your packet as far as what the special assessments are. Those special assessments, I think as most residents know, can be either paid in full or they can be deferred over a time specific. Kevin, do you have any comments you want to make on the final assessments?
The question is, I'll see. Darrell, is, do you have a final special assessment? And that basically outlines where the actual project cost came in. Do we look at? Page number four, page number structure, cost, and inventory, and management. Total cost of product is $122,000. That roughly about $25,000, $26,000 less than what the preliminary assessment report was. Hence, we don't have a public hearing. Again, 50% was going to be assessed to the property owners, 50%. So that's roughly $61,000. And page number six, per unit, this is going to be per unit per lot basis. Their cost per lot can be $3,000, $86,41 cents.
About $650 less than what the preliminary assessment report was. So I guess I open it up to any questions on that. You do have in front of you the final resolution, like Darrell was saying, they would have up to October 25th to pay, pay it off initially, otherwise they can put it on their tax roll and pay it over. For that particular item, it'd be for a six-year timeframe, and it's a percent and a half more than what the village would borrow, or borrow the money for, is what they would be charged for a financial fee.
Thank you.
So for purposes of moving this forward, and in case there's any discussion, Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of resolution number 2011-13, which is the resolution for the special assessments as indicated in Schedule C in the information chair.
Second.
You're a second, thank you. Any other discussion?
I just got a question, this is more of a learning question. When we do a special assessment, are we assessing how much property is along the road? Or is it just per unit?
Kevin, why don't you respond, so it's on the tape?
I mean, that was actually discussed as part of the first, when we did the first project, and it was a decision made, you know, it was going to be on a per lot basis, just because they're fairly decent sized lots. You know, some areas, some projects that we've done in the past has been on a linear footage, but for this particular case, it's on a per lot basis. Could have some flexibility there. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Board has a choice of how to do it, as long as they come up with sort of the most fair way to do it for all the properties involved?
Good question. Thank you. Nice answer, short, too. Okay. I think we're covered with public works. Item 11, public safety committee recommend.
We need to vote on the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. We have a resolution, we have a motion and a second, and we've had a little discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
We probably need a roll call on this.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Stan?
Ah, yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes. All right, yes.
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 Okay. Hearing unanimous. Now we can go on to public safety. Jim?
Drop it. Item B, increase in parking violation fine for over length vehicles, approval requested. At this point, we're going to discuss this in more detail on Thursday. Judge Wampat came down and gave us his interpretation of what's been happening and the concerns of how if we regulate parking on any particular streets, it's going to just continue to ripple on down to the village. Mark, do you want to grab the podium and sort of help out with any thoughts you've got? So if the board has any input for us for our meeting on Thursday, possibly.
And just a correction, it was Judge Wampat that came forward. I think it was just a pronunciation issue. People call me all kinds of different things, so I understand. But yeah, Judge Wampat did come down, and we had some discussion about the ordinance, and really there was no resolution at the, at the public safety meeting, so not prepared to move forward on this particular item at this time, but we are looking into it and trying to determine really the fairest way to still solve the issues that we've got with relation to over length vehicles in the entire village, but maybe more specifically the parking issues related to trailers and whatnot near Fairly Lanning Park. And if you look on the public safety committee agenda, both items are listed separately, so we can try to figure out where we're going to go with that.
Absolutely. And the next item C is the possibility of increasing fines for parking in designated handicap and disabled spaces. We did table that motion also. Public safety, we'll be discussing that again this Thursday.
That's not on the agenda, that was tabled from the last board meeting to this board meeting. And I guess that one, if you're interested, you could still move on tonight.
We probably could. Did you have a recommendation as to what you have seen in other municipalities? What's what standard fee is?
Well, two months ago at the public safety committee, it was moved that the fine amount be changed from $50 to $100, and so my understanding was that was the motion that was being brought forward as a recommendation from public safety.
And I would be absolutely fine with making a motion to the board to increase that fee from $50 to $100 at this time.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Would this, I'm just procedurally, is it, is this simply a fee change, or is this, I mean, ordinance change? Can we do this by simple motion, Terry? You can do it by simple motion if it's in your fee schedule, right? Is that where it is? Do we do a resolution and we can change?
It's not in the fee schedule.
It's not in the fee schedule?
It's in a different schedule that is, what is it called?
Basically, it's in the bond schedule that we have, not the state bond schedule, but just the bond schedule that's pared down from those numbers.
It's not written in our ordinance, so I don't think that we need to have an ordinance to change it.
Well, if it's not in the ordinance, then you don't, but.
Right, it's not in the ordinance.
But it's not in the regular fee schedule either, which would just be a resolution.
That has, yeah, our fee schedule doesn't have anything to do with the police citations.
With the fine amounts or the bond amounts, really, it's, it goes through the courts, and based on the information that I read in the ordinance, it talks about the fact that the board sets the parking fines and fees.
Darrell, I don't know the answer then, but it would be okay to go ahead and do it, and if not, we'll do it again next month if we have to do something different procedurally.
Good answer.
So I'll check that.
It's not in the ordinance.
Well.
It's not in it, yeah.
Given those parameters, we have a motion and a second, we're discussing it. We might as well vote on it, we may do it again apparently, but. Let's move on.
Absolutely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carried to increase the fine for parking in a designated handicap to disabled space.
Beautiful. With the emergency management director job description, we do need to have this plan signed by a September deadline. The description, the job description itself is extremely lengthy and complex. We will be discussing that again Thursday in an effort to try to get that resolved and find out what, who will be responsible for this and what the compensation for this position will be. So we will be discussing that Thursday. Do you have anything on that at all?
Yeah, this is actually, this particular item was looking for passage of the, or approval of the update to the emergency operations plan, and that is true, there is a deadline of September 30th that we have to have this document to the county so that they can then provide it to the state. So what I did was, in lieu of the fact we do not have an emergency management director position and all of those things, as I went through and updated the document with phone numbers, names, and those types of things, so really, other than names and phone numbers, and I think Stan noticed, there was, his cellphone was missing, that's now been added to the document. They're just, those are, those are kind of the changes that are made, and the line of succession that was changed from the last time it was updated.
Can we get a motion to approve that updated?
Sure, I would make such a motion, I would move that we approve the updates that Mark has performed on the emergency management plan.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any other discussion?
Could we get that, the treasurer listed in there? I know it says administrator, but it'd be great if it said treasurer, just because I know that some of the emergency management, I don't believe I seen it, but it could have been. I'll let you tell me whether it's in there.
What are the consequences of not having that filled in on time, for example?
That's a great question. I don't know, I don't have the answer to that, other than I like your rules.
I've had difficulty administering this sort of thing because it's rather burdensome, and frankly, I could be fast and loose, but where does it go? And the time limit, does it matter? Who sees it? And that sort of thing.
Well, to venture a guess, I believe it's, there's probably state statute that references that each municipality must have it submitted to the state, or to the county, and then to the state.
Justin Saylor needs to complete it and get it into the state.
Right.
And I ask again, what are the, what are the consequences?
I think we would be out of compliance with state law, which we try to avoid.
And then what are the consequences of that?
That I don't know.
No, I'm just wondering what kind of punishment is doled out in that sort of situation.
I don't want to find out, let me put it that way.
The President Pro Tem off to jail. Paul's the President Pro Tem off to jail, don't you, Mark?
Not myself. Complex of interest and all.
Honestly, it's a question of really, does anybody, what happens in those deals?
I can find out and get back to you on that.
Usually not, Mark.
Okay. I mean, doesn't anybody else wonder if they just say, "Do it, you just do it," and are we all going?
But it is important.
I wonder if that's some of these things.
The state makes a lot of mandates, and most municipalities comply. Some don't, and they're often are not consequences, but there could be.
Probably the practical side is that if we do have an emergency here, we want to make sure that our plan is up to date, regardless of what the state says.
Are we referring to the plan or the hiring of a director?
The plan, I think the plan. And I think to answer Gloria's question about the treasurer, because it's not in here tonight and because the wording isn't there, I would request that you pass it as is, and we can add that as a, amend that when we come to our next update.
In response to your, Becky's comment, is, if Mark has a plan or enough information in there that pretty much covers everything, but the submitting of it every year and the redoing of it, to me seems a bit burdensome periodically. And Lord knows, we want to be prepared in the event of an emergency, because I'm waiting to get up that line of succession myself.
But it is.
But all I'm doing is, it's been an issue ever since this was thrust on us, and it's a lot of work. And there is expense with that work, and I just wonder where it all goes, or what happens.
To help out, this might help out a little bit, and extremely briefly, but the reason for keeping this plan updated is it involves such things as working with distributors like Menards or Home Depot to make sure that we've got access to materials in the event things need to be boarded up. Language with these, basically you have contract options that are created. That's why you do it, because in the event that you have a disaster, it's not the time to be scrambling to say, "Hey, we need 200 sheets of plywood. How are we going to get them? How are we going to get them down here?" So it's all of these little things, this is one of 100 different examples.
Well, and if you have a disaster and you don't submit your request for disaster aid correctly, you could be out that aid.
Absolutely. And for liability, if people come in and they want to volunteer, and we don't have them sign up as a volunteer, we assume the liability for that person, anything that happens, and we as a village would be extremely exposed to potential lawsuits and things. So there's a lot to it, you know, it is complex. And as Mark and I have started to unravel the layers of this onion, it's deep and involved, and we want to try to be effective and efficient, but still keep it manageable. It's not easy, but we'll come up with a plan here. But I think getting signatures on here, so this one's compliance right now is critical, and I offer that as a friendly amendment to my motion, that we will make what necessary changes are, that Mark needs to add for phone numbers and the treasurer.
Thank you.
But we have moved to get this.
I know I'll sleep sounder tonight.
I hope so.
I got one more question on that item. Do we have money set aside in the budget for an emergency management position?
If I'm supposed to field that one, I would say potentially not. But we still have to determine what that amount will be and how much work is involved in a position. Let's say at this point, with budget crunches, issues that we've got, potentially not there. Looking, that's a good point, Dan.
I just hate to see you put all this work into something we're not going to fill anyway, if that so be.
Well, then, I hope we get an emergency so we can try this thing out.
Again, it's assignment of duties, and there are statutory requirements as far as having the work plan. requirements as far as having the, uh, the work plan in place, and there are legal ramifications in terms of, uh, notice procedures and notice requirements in the event of the trigger, triggering of an emergency, so it's primarily the assignment of the duties under someone's designated responsibility.
Yes. I, I only brought it up because I feel that we should be looking with the city of Hudson together, and getting the unit put together as one.
And that is an, uh, agenda topic for Thursday's public safety meeting?
I was looking for the board's opinion on that.
I'm not sure if it fits under this agenda item.
It's not.
Yeah, we will be discussing it on Thursday. Sounds good. So, we've got a motion and a second before we...
Second, Dan. Some discussion, so we'll, can we get, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same sign.
And then on a good note, number E, um, Mark, I'll let you, uh, kiss the kudos on this one.
I'm just going to go quickly, the public safety committee had authorized the sale of the Quonset Hut Storage Building that we purchased roughly six years ago, it was posted on Craigslist, and after a few go-arounds with people that were interested, we do have a written bid, um, for the, uh, full amount that we requested, uh, or we advertised it for, and so, uh, we do, you should have in front of you the written bid from Samuel Beatty, uh, in the amount of four thousand dollars for the purchase of the Quonset Hut Storage Building, as is, with no warranties from the village.
Can we get a motion to that regard?
Move, uh, is there a recommended motion?
Yeah, there is, well, we had it in finance, Jim, same thing. I'll move to accept the bid of four thousand dollars by Samuel Beatty for the, uh, Quonset Hut we had advertised.
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, item twelve, public welfare committee recommendations. We met briefly to discuss the continuation of the spring bulk item collection for 2012.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Um, and so, it was a recommendation of public welfare to discontinue the spring bulk item collection, which was that, uh, spring event where we had, um, the big, uh, the dumpsters up behind the car wash, due to lack of, um, participation. I'll move that we discontinue the spring bulk item collection for 2012.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Anybody needs any more information, what, than what I briefly threw out, out there? Okay, thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Then we have the discontinuance of the spring and fall leaf collection for 2012, we'll still have it for the fall of this year, but this is for next year. Public welfare thought with the diminishing, um, monies available towards that, the, uh, the diminishing lack of use of it because of other ways to get rid of it, the, uh, the bulk item, or the, um, collector baskets that Violia has, and people have been finding a way to get rid of their, um, yard waste or fall leaf collection stuff, and there was a cost to the village of approximately two thousand dollars that we don't know if we can recoup, so the public welfare, um, I'll, uh, pro- uh, recommended that we discontinue that, so I will move to discontinue the spring and fall leaf collection for 2012.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that is approved. Item thirteen...
Mark, me, just to interject really quickly, um, just a notation that that spring and fall leaf collection discontinuance would start in 2012, the 2011 fall leaf collection is still taking place and will take place on November seventh.
I mentioned it at the very beginning.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
It's okay.
Thank you.
But we have a date?
Yes.
November seventh?
November seventh, but it's the first Monday in November, and that's kind of...
You hear that? November seventh?
November seventh, yes.
Item thirteen, park board committee recommendations, chair update.
Um, I don't have a large update, just reminding everyone that, um, the dedication for Chief Jansen Memorial Park will be Saturday, September twenty-fourth, from eleven to one. Um, and I, we did discuss a little bit at our park board meeting that, you know, we've been talking about this park for so long, we, um, haven't really been mentioning other things that the park board has done that have been successful, um, as outlined in our park plan, such as having the skating rink here at the, the Village Hall, has been quite popular the past couple winters, we've replaced some signs such as at Eagle Woods and Woodcrest, um, we've started working with North Hudson Elementary and making a little more use of Webster Park, um, and started with, you know, the Buckthor and Thinning, or the first go-around of Buckthor and Thinning, um, so just wanted people to be aware that, you know, we have been working on other things in addition to Chief Jansen Park, um, so I hope you can make it to the dedication.
Thank you, Colleen. That's all the official business we have tonight.
Motion to adjourn?
You can if you'd like, but we don't necessarily need one.
Well, since you're the chair, you get to do it all the other time, I'm getting to do it this time.
Well, then, we're officially, it's officially over, thank you.